Okay, I'm going to call this October 3rd Semamish Planning Commission Meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. Hesham Elkhawad.
Here.
Sayad Safavian.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mark Boffman and I'm here. Mike Bresko.
Here.
You're not Mark, I'm Mark. John Bachman.
Here.
Hongyang Wang. We are missing Suda and we're missing Ajay. Ajay had an excused absence. We'll see if Suda joins us or not. Okay. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. Anything on this evening's agenda? I will do better than I did last time and make the comment that on the agenda is a public comment at the end, but since we're having a public hearing and that's the only agenda item, then we won't have that public comment at the end because we all have already done public comments part of the public. So that's a slight adjustment there. Anything else? Nope, so we'll call the agenda approved. Approval of minutes from our September 19th meeting. Any corrections to those meeting minutes? None? Okay, we'll call the minutes approved. Next, let's do non-agenda public comments. So tonight, we're going to hopefully wrap up our discussion and pass along the City Council of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update Related Implementing Development Regulations. If you have some public comment other than that, now's the time. And that's our typical three minutes per person. Anybody have non-agenda public comment? Mary, go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Mary Victor, Semamish for 24 years. For non-agenda, I just wanted, since I talk about critical areas a lot, I wanted to do some things to speak about golden rules for critical areas because I think those are valid and I think that you can apply them to other things like shorelines too. So the first golden rule I wrote down is if you have one rule or code that works citywide, it's going to be insufficient for critical areas because critical areas are specifically per law supposed to be identified, delineated, and protected. So that is the first golden rule. The second one is that if you're just relying on the old existing city code, most of the code when the city incorporated in 1999, they just adopted from King County and it certainly mostly stayed the same until 2003. And if we really haven't been doing new things, or you just don't want to change it because it's just the way it is and you don't want to change that one line of code or what reference, you're not actually using best available science, BAS. Best available science is required for critical areas. It's how you identify them or protect them. So just don't rely on the existing code and if there's a little line that needs a little change, let's change it. And I've done a couple of those through the years and it's really hard to spend 30 minutes on getting a four change to a five, or five change to a four for how much you can clear before you can put a retaining wall, for example. A third golden rule is for critical area ordinances, they need to work with the stormwater code. We can't just have the stormwater people and the critical areas people, they need to work together because when you add water to a critical area, that's where you have problems. We also should not be making critical areas code less stringent, like it's okay to change or do things, but if you're making it less stringent, you're probably going the wrong way and it's probably not best available science. Golden rule number four, if you fail to identify things upfront, or if they're missing or incorrect, it's really harmful to the length and duration of time of the permit process and those are supposed to be getting shorter. So we need to avoid, minimize, mitigate the sequencing as first onsite and then offsite. That works for critical areas and also works for shorelines. But if we don't know the things upfront, we've got a problem. So I actually met with Angel, or excuse me, Avril Bat-Beatty this week for one hour, kind of on what are we doing for the critical areas report. So we'll be doing some homework for that. Then for the fifth golden rule, for sewer and septic, you have water, wells, karas, the city, the water district in King County, and they all need to work together along with the people. And when we don't do that, we hurt the environment. And by the time that you've either hurt the environment and the animals, or you've made water quality worse, it's too expensive to clean up. Item six is trees and vegetation. They're not critical areas, but they are entwined. And seven is we need to do some bonding for landscaping and for earthwork that doesn't get done like 25,000 or 100,000. So those are my seven golden rules I came up with last week. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Anyone else? Paul?
Hello, Commissioners. It's Paul Stickney, Semamish, and Albert Avril would like to be called Angel. But I went to the Isakua Food Bank event a couple afternoons ago and it was a great event, a lot of people there. And I was at a table with a lot of people I did not know and, you know, a couple I did. And one guy was talking to me a bit, who was a co-host at the table, and asked, well, what do you do? And we got a little bit around the housing and he goes, what do you mean about housing? And I said, well, housing im balance, spelled I am. And he said, what the hell's that? And so we talked about that and then he sort of understood that. And he goes, well, man, you know a lot. What's your role? Are you a politician? I go, no, 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 no. I'm a statesman. And he said, what does that mean? I said, well, that puts policy above ideology and works much more bottom up rather than top down. So anyway, we were in this conversation about 20 minutes going all back and forth. And he used to live in Semamish over near Pine Lake and he was interested to hear that where he lived is now the new maintenance and operation location, number two for the city. We got into all this kind of stuff and now he lives south of South Cove. And I knew the street he was on. I've been, even I'll stay here forever. So anyway, we just kind of hit it off. But a couple of good comments towards the end. Not that the whole conversation was not interesting, and it was, but a couple of key points that I took away, and he and I, I'm not going to say agreed on this, we concurred on these things. One thing was that we talked about is, is that when someone buys a house in the community they're in, they almost never think about, will I need to change in the future? Because I said, how many people do you know who contemplate, well, in 20 years, if I want to stay here, is there a good supply or not? He said, there's no one who thinks that way. And then he talked about, well, what you're talking about would be kind of hard in a community because how many people know about that? How many people think about it? And at first glance, what are they going to think? And I said to him, well, the one thing you have to get over is, is you have to help people at least consider that it doesn't matter until it does. So for somebody who has a change later, or a family issue, or a friend, or a nanny, or something, so anyway, he wants to meet and talk a whole bunch more. We talked a little bit about Isakua and Semamish politics and different things, but it was a good conversation. And then the program started and it was a great event, by the way. Okay.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Anybody online?
No hands raised online.
All right. Thank you. So let's move on to this evening's main topic of discussion. And I don't know, David or Jeff, when are you going to start us out?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I have a short presentation for you that I'll pull up now and share my screen. Okay. So you should be able to see the opening slide and we're ready to proceed.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, great. So I will be presenting tonight an abbreviated version of the presentation that we gave last time focusing on some of the sort of evolving topics and those that have come up in some of the questions. So we're going to go through the affordable housing requirements, talk a little bit about maximum net density in the mixed, sorry, in the middle housing overlays, the rezone process that we presented previously, and transitions and separations from existing development. And then we'll get into other questions and discussion the commission members may have, and then the public hearing followed by the recommendation. So on affordability, this outlines the requirements, which is in a new chapter, 21.10 Affordable Housing, and the draft code was submitted in the packet. This program would, as currently conceived, apply to each configuration, including single family, based on the arch pro forma. The threshold would be 10% of the units with fee in lieu provided for fractional units. The affordability level would be affordable to households making 80% of AMI or lower. And we have provided some avenues for alternative compliance, the fee in lieu I just mentioned, offsite performance, or land dedication, which could be done through development agreement. Some of the incentives that we're looking at are impact fee waivers, property tax exemption, which is pending policy decision, bonus units or regulatory relief, also pending policy decision. Exemptions would apply to existing homes, units with gross square footage less than 800 feet, including accessory dwelling units. Carve-out units, which are units that are created within an existing structure, not requiring an expansion of that structure. Garage conversions, which is similar but involves, you know, kind of non-habitable space converted to a unit or usable space. And then the exemptions would also apply to the bonus units that are generated from affordability or transit proximity. So that is the details as it's been put together in the packet for this round. So there's some additional staff recommended edits, and I think some of this came up in some of the comments that commission members submitted. So I'll just run through them briefly. The first one, change concurrent to be more specific so that affordable units must be delivered at the same time, measured at the time of final inspection and occupancy. And the city would be authorized to withhold occupancy of any market rate units if the affordable units are not provided. So the idea with that change is to make sure that the market units and affordable units are being delivered on the same timeline. The second one would be to change preference will be given to sites in the same neighborhood planning area to read within a quarter mile of the project area, so more prescriptive. The next one deals with just pulling some existing language from the Town Center Code, which already has some language around affordability that we can apply here. And then finally, this one is related to the land dedication option. Timing of land dedication proposals shall follow requirements of development agreements and must be adopted by the City Council prior to the issuance of market rate building permits. So the land dedication process would have to be completed before applicants could proceed with development of the market rate units. So you can ensure again that there's some connection between the production of the market units and affordable units in terms of the timeline. Okay, so a little bit more background on the middle housing overlays. We have three of them. First one applies to R1. Generally, the units on R1 lots are capped at the numbers you see there with the exception of cottage housing. So applicants could choose to use the cottage housing code to add more units and that has much more prescriptive standards and limitations on unit sizes such that the total square footage, I think that could be developed in a cottage project while more units is similar to what would be allowed under R1. The MHO2 will apply to the R4 district. That will allow three units on every lot, which is the mandate for HB 1110 and House Bill 1337, which deals with accessory dwelling units. And so if you have any size lot, I think down to the minimum identified in the bill around 1,000 or so square feet, you can put three units on there. If you have a larger lot, you could develop that at 12 units an acre or the three units, whichever is higher. And we have an example of how that gets calculated here in a moment to explain how that works. And then the final overlay applies to both the R6 and the R8. So there's like a bit of smoothing that's happening in terms of the middle housing density that would be allowed on those areas. Similarly, three units on any size lot down to the minimum specified in the bill. And then if you have a larger lot, you could develop at 18 units an acre, which is similar to the density allowed when you apply those three units to a standard size lot. And then over on the right, there's Florida area ratio limits. And so this is an existing standard we adopted as part of Phase 2 development regs, which kept the single-family Florida area ratio at 0.5. Now, if additional units are added, there's a 0.15 additional FAR that's applied to those units. So it's a way to control bulk and scale and kind of incentivize the production of smaller units, since that's the way that applicants can maximize the amount of square footage that they're able to develop. And so that's how that works. So now this has the density example that the commission had asked for last time. And so we kind of want to think about this in three buckets. What is a standard size lot, which is essentially just taking an acre and dividing it by the base number of units? So in the R6, that's six. You divide an acre by six, you get the standard lot size that's shown in the middle, 7,200 square feet, pretty standard lot size you see in many different communities. When you apply the unit density, which is what we're allowed to do or required to do under the new state law, you get three units on there, okay? And then the net density in that district is 18 units an acre. And so if you apply the 18 units an acre to the standard lot, you get the same result. It's three units. So that's how we kind of came up with the 18 units an acre is this middle scenario. And now here's what happens if you have a smaller or a larger lot. So if you have a smaller lot, you're going to get three units on that. That's going to be more dense than the 18 units an acre. So anytime your parcel is smaller, the unit density is going to be your most advantageous development in terms of square footage or units. You have a larger lot, you can get the three units, but you're now able to utilize that additional square footage above the 7,200 and develop that at 18 units an acre. And so when you apply the calculation both ways, in this scenario at 18 units an acre, you get 3.7 units. Realize it's a fractional unit, but if it was a little bit larger, 10,000 square feet or whatnot, you'd get up over four. So basically, it allows you to scale because these size lots at 9,000 square feet wouldn't be eligible for subdivision and therefore they get less sort of development rights than these smaller lots. And I believe the commission is aware of this, but the Mamish has a lot of smaller lots because it's always allowed clustering. And so it's, you know, lots that have been reduced as part of clustering, it's still using the preserved open space as part of the density calculations, if that makes sense. So happy to answer any questions on that. I understand this might be a little bit confusing, but that's basically kind of summarizes the methodology that we use to kind of develop the net density, which is essentially based off the standard lot sizes and applying the unit density.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, if anyone has any question, I'd be happy to answer any right now.
Just to confirm, Jeff, the three points, I recall reading the rounding language that's in there, but the 3.7 can be rounded to four, correct? If it was 2.1, it can't be rounded?
Yes, I believe that is the way it works. Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, just a couple more. This is the rezone process, which would essentially allow any parcel that meets these criteria. These criteria are, you know, fairly detailed and prescriptive. Because they're now the same future land use map designation, changing the zoning doesn't in this instance require a change to the comp plan. So they could apply for the rezone and the criteria include being adjacent to another higher intensity zone. So if that's the case, they would be at least initially eligible. They can only move up one category of intensity. So for example, from R4 to R6 or R1 to R4. All of the critical areas rules still apply, have to have water and sewer capacity. There's a requirement to be within walking distance proximity to transit or centers, which will also limit the parcels that are eligible and of course meet drainage requirements and other development standards as those are developed. But it is a bit of a streamlined process that would allow, again, property owners that meet these conditions to apply for a change through that process. Okay, next one, dynamic setbacks. And this is really related to the issue of how we deal with compatibility between parcels that may have middle housing versus single-family housing, parcels that may have different zoning attached to them, so on and so forth. And in development regulations Phase 1, which, you know, was a city-led effort, there were dynamic setbacks established and we are planning to retain those. We have changed the wording from building, from homes to buildings so that that applies to multiple buildings on a site and not just homes or single-family homes. So those will remain in place and those apply based on the size of the building. So for developers or applicants that want to take advantage of the smaller setbacks, then they could choose to do more detached structures that are smaller in scale. They want to take advantage of the larger setbacks.
Hey Jeff, just so you know, I don't know if you can hear me. Jeff, can you hear me? You're frozen. You're frozen, just so you know. Is this working in here? Yeah, it is working in here. I don't know if you can ping him real quick. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll see how it goes turning the computer off and back on again. Can somebody let Jeff know? Thanks. So we'll be back at, let's say, 7:00. So we'll be back at, let's say, seven.
Recording in progress.
Is that working? There we go. Hello, are you able to hear me?
Okay, now we can hear you, Jeff. Can you hear us? I'm assuming by the smile you can.
Yes, loud and clear.
There's no rude sound going here, so... Are we good to go?
We're good to go.
Jeff's gonna have to share his screen again. And we're gonna check one more thing real quick, and then we should be back on track. Okay. Sounds like we are ready to get back on track here.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'll start back on this one. I'm not sure when you all lost audio, but this is going through the dynamic setbacks. These dynamic setbacks were put in place as part of development regulations Phase One to address community concerns around the proximity of larger-scale buildings to each other in particularly the R zones. And so as part of the middle housing code and implementation within the overlays, we are planning to keep the dynamic setbacks as they are today. The only change we're proposing is to change the word "homes" to "buildings", so that for middle housing projects, applicants could choose to make use of the smaller setbacks by having, say, smaller detached structures. And if they wanted to have larger structures, regardless of the number of units, the dynamic setbacks would still apply. So that is being proposed. One other thing related to setbacks I just wanted to point out. For the middle housing overlays, we're proposing a setback for parking. And in some cases, that's 5 feet. And I just wanted to note that that is an increase of what's permitted today. So currently driveways, I believe it's referenced as paved surfaces, are not considered structures currently, and therefore aren't subject to the setbacks. But now with middle housing being allowed, there's a potential for, you know, more parking to service those units. And so we thought it made sense to implement a parking setback where one does not exist today. Okay, and then...
Before you go on, I had a question on the last, the last slide.
Sure. Please.
In the graph on the right shows buildings greater than 2,500 to 4,000 square feet. How does that 4,000-square-foot figure relate to the maximum 3,000-square-foot new structure limitation?
Yeah, so the 3,000, good question. The 3,000-square-foot is a footprint limit, so that's just the, the base footprint of the building. Whereas these dynamic setbacks apply to all of the square footage, whether it's on the first floor or second floor, so it's the total building square footage. So those are both related kind of controls for bulk and scale of buildings.
Yeah, so maybe footnote that this is total square foot.
It, it does say it up higher in the code in a different section. What you're seeing is a table that's an excerpt from that section.
Okay, thanks David.
Yep, good question.
The, the one other comment that I wanted to make about this is that, and David said this to me, and I realized I hadn't been thinking about it as clearly. So maybe for somebody who watches this later on 1.5 speed, they'll catch this. The, some of those, some of those setbacks, so when we say the dynamic setbacks remain, it's easy to look at the image here and forget that in some cases the setback is next to another, you know, three-building lot that's part of an overall development. And in some cases, what we see is a development that's adjacent to somebody's house in an R4 zone. So when typically I would say, this isn't exactly right, but some of those setbacks that seemed small to me, when I realized that those were really small setbacks that are within a development, not next to an existing property, because the existing property would maintain the setbacks that we've already previously defined. I think that's an important distinction, that it's easy to forget when you look at these images. So I just wanted to point that out kind of for the record, that people looking at this should remember that.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, these diagrams are somewhat spatially accurate, and I think this is the point that you were trying to make. But in some cases, there's multiple dimensions for each of these numbers. So the numbers are really what is regulatory. The graphic is sort of just like a guide, so to speak. Because as you pointed out, in some cases, C or D is going to depend on how big your building is, and it's not going to be the same across every development, so.
Can I add one more point of clarification? And that, that is that, so, so the thing that's important to keep in mind is that under HB 1110, we cannot require regulations that are more restrictive than what single-family is already, is applied to single-family. So, so if you're looking at the setbacks and you're saying, oh man, I, I really think we should have more setbacks for middle housing, well then we also have to apply more, more perimeter setbacks to single-family. So that's really important to keep in mind. We, we think that how we've designed this, I feel very comfortable with this, that 3,000-square-foot maximum-sized footprint also applies to single-family. For a building that's smaller than 2,500 square feet in the R4, these are your perimeter setbacks that you'd have, buildings that are internal to each other. So someone is now choosing to live in the development, right, at that point. You're not affecting a neighbor. It's, it's, it's subject to the space between buildings. So that's, that's the, the trade-off that we're looking at, and we're, we're not, the space between buildings wouldn't, would not really apply to single-family, because somebody's, you know, not building multiple units unless they're doing middle housing types.
Great. Thanks, David.
Are we gonna be posing a question at this time, or are we gonna be questioning later on? Because I've got a number of questions on this slide.
Well, I think we should. We should talk about enough. I think if you have questions specific to the slide, we should do it while we have a chance.
Number of things, Jeff. I suggested they get rid of the dynamic, and I suggested use variable or something more quantitative. And I still, we're talking about dynamic setback, remember?
I do recall, but not the specifics.
So I, I don't think the code actually uses the term "dynamic". I think that's just what we call it.
But a lot of people don't understand what does dynamic means.
Sure, we could, you could call it variable, you know, but it's not a matter of changing the code, it's just the slide.
Also, I brought up the issue of should we have the C, the setback, related to the function of the streets. One was primary street, let's say if it's arterial, the setback would be the same as, as a residential or side street to be collector? The C number would stay the same? It shouldn't be.
So for, for projects that are not associated with a division of land, then it would, so it's existing lots, right? So, but if you were doing a division of land, keep in mind that we also have another set of standards in the subdivision rules that when you're on an arterial, require an arterial frontage, which requires more setback. So, the challenge here is that you're not dividing the property. It's an existing lot. So we're not, we're not requiring a bigger setback in that instance. But if you were dividing the, the property, we would.
So let's, let's assume that this is our one zone, and somebody wants to put a house, a unit, a single unit, right, as a R1 zone. The C number right now under current zoning, would that be the same as what we have now? Five? What is that, five?
Twenty.
Twenty feet. Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Yep.
The same, so that stays the same?
That stays the same.
The setback.
Twenty feet.
Yeah.
And also, the number of discussions on a D. What happens if the, the other side of the D is a high, higher density residential, and even though that there may be another D on the other side? So we're talking about a total setback between the two buildings, only 10 feet?
So under D in the R4, or R1, R1? In the R1, the side setback's 25 feet. That's the D on both sides, so it's a 50 feet total across the property.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, keep going, Jeff.
Okay, last slide. So the bonus parcels, which are parcels owned by religious organizations or public entities, and these were identified early on in the process, and this is a program that has been specified in state law. And essentially allows a bonus, meaning a density bonus for affordable housing on these sites. And there are some cities in the region that have already implemented this within the past few years. So again, this would, these projects would be subject to the dynamic setbacks of the underlying zone. In certain instances, based on proximity, if the site butts one of the R zones, even if it's also within an R zone, there is a upper-level setback. So three stories is what's permitted under the code now. So this is not, you know, a substantive change from the height, it's consistent. And then if you're in proximity to that zone, you have to have an upper-level setback. If you're an R zone, but you're adjacent to, say, one of the commercial zones, then you wouldn't have to provide the upper-level setback. And we do have at least one site that falls within that category. So the setback would require it at 35 feet, which is the height allowed in the base zone, and the setback must be 30 feet. So essentially the upper stories, you know, would be an additional 30 feet back compared to the lower three stories. Where buffering is required, or in proximity, which is a type-two landscaping is required, which is already specified in the code. So this is dealing both with the comp plan implementation, as well as our compliance with state mandates related to planning for and accommodating affordable housing. And that's it. We can turn it back over to the chair for questions and discussion before the hearing.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, who has questions? Or Jeff? Go ahead, Sid.
Let's start talking about the, Jeff, can you elaborate a little bit on the impact fee exemptions that applies to the, to the middle housing overlay? How does it work?
Yeah, those are just specifically for affordable units in the Affordable program. And that, again, is something that's authorized in state law. Cities are not required to do it, but they are permitted to waive impact fees or provide some level of reduction for affordable units.
Regardless of numbers?
I'll, I'll add that we already have this in our code under the impact fee sections. Example, school impact fees can be reduced or waived for certain levels of affordability. It's already written into the code. What we're really doing here is referencing it.
Okay, and the same question for the property tax exemption?
I don't think there's a provision or proposal for property tax exemption here.
I saw in one of, right now, property tax exemption.
I think that's just the multifamily tax exemption, David, that we've been talking about.
Yeah, so that, that would need to be activated. What we're doing with this, in part, so we, one way to explain this, and maybe this isn't clear, and I apologize if not, is there's a couple of things happening here. One is, is we're adding middle housing affordability requirements. Two is, we're building out the code with a whole new affordable housing section, where we're starting to set up some places, some, the structure of the Affordable Housing Code. As we continue with our Town Center update, we're going to be porting over the Town Center Affordable Housing components into the Affordable Housing Code. And then as we continue in 2026 through 2028, to continue to work on our sub-areas and our neighborhood centers, we're going to also then be building out the Affordable Housing Code section for the sub-areas that we will be developing. So what you're seeing here is, is really the structure of a, a section to be the, the central location for everything related to affordable housing. Whereas right now, it is somewhat diffuse in the code. And as we add things, we're wanting to have that central location so that it's easy to understand. We don't have to worry about, well, if we update it here, well, does it, does it properly match what's over there? We want to just move everything to this one place. So what you're starting to see are some things that we're, we're adding. And when it says pending policy discussion or decision, that means that we're going to continue to work on that. You all will be a big part of that in the coming years.
So let, let me understand it. Let's say that I'm coming with a proposal to put 30 affordable housing units somewhere in the, in the city. Am I, am I not going to be paying any property taxes? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, for, for now you will, until such a time as the multifamily tax exemption program that we're going to be talking about with Town Center, and hopefully with the sub-area efforts that we're taking on, will then be integrated into it. However, that's multifamily. I don't, I don't envision a world whereby middle housing affordable units are granted a tax exemption. That usually is related to state, a state-authorized program that pertains to multifamily housing. And middle housing is not multifamily.
David, what is the neighborhood planning area?
So we're, we're, we're proposing to strike that, because that doesn't exist. Instead, instead, we're proposing to make it a quarter-mile.
Also, speaking of quarter-mile, as we know, we already have, we only have one transit route, 228. And this quarter-mile from the bus stop would apply only to any project that comes along through 228 within a quarter-mile. The rest of the city would not be able to take advantage of that changes in zoning.
So for that specific allowance that gets you to four units, yes, that's true. But that is an HB 1110 mandate that specifically says within a quarter mile of a major transit corridor, that is not something we're proposing to or making up. That comes directly from state law.
Right, so let's say in the future, King County decide to run one on the East Lex and Mamish, then 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 they, that rule would apply to the to that area around the bus stop.
Assuming it meets the definition of a major transit corridor.
And who defines the major transit?
It's defined by HB 1110.
What is the land dedication process?
Land dedication process is where a is an alternative path to providing affordable units or to provide or to paying a fee in lieu. It's where an applicant works with the city through a development agreement process to identify land that is roughly the equivalent of the value of building those units on the site.
So that is a totally different process than development review?
It is part of development review. And what we're saying is the development agreement, which is a contract between a developer, property owner, and the city council, and is enforceable, would have to be in place and passed as an ordinance prior to the the developer getting the building permit to build on site.
Thank you very much.
Who else has questions for Jeff or David? DeShawn?
Jeff, I'll go back to the 10% requirement as it applies to single family homes. And again, I'm going to use the example. If I have a piece of land and I want to build a house for my family, I will be required to pay a penalty because there is no way I can provide a 10% affordable housing unit, right?
Yes, it would be a fractional unit, yes, so not an entire unit. But but yes, that's correct.
It would be calculated at the square footage of the home. So there's a couple of different ways to look at this. And we already have in our code with Town Center, a requirement that you provide 10% of the units be affordable in the Town Center. The Town Center code happens to exempt anything less than 10. So if you're not building 10, you don't have to provide it. But it but it does, the Town Center code does present, when affordable housing units are required, the 10% is required, at 80% AMI, similar to what we're talking about here, that it does offer multiple alternatives to actually providing the units on site. One is is payment of a fee in lieu. And the payment of the fee in lieu is a policy statement in the code that is not a formula. Instead, it says that it shall be at the, the director shall adopt a a formula, which we use ARCH to do that, to calculate the the equivalent of building the unit on site. So ARCH maintains a formula that we use that when somebody wants to pay a fee in lieu, they enter some some different factors into that and it generates a, the fee in lieu, which then is required to be paid prior to, I think, for Town Center, its issuance of building permits. So what what happens then is, is so that's a policy statement in the code. We don't codify the formula because the formula is somewhat dynamic. It changes a bit or it varies for not. So so the the one comment I heard was, excuse me, we need to adopt the formula in the code. Well, my my response to that is, I would love to. However, it would be we'd be constantly updating it. And we have an example where that already is being used, where we don't have the actual formula in our code. It's administratively adopted. So we're looking at something similar here where we're wanting to set the policy statement that that with with, because of the middle housing up zone granted by HB 1110, that any new development in these these zones, R1 through R8, or the MHO1 through MHO3, are required to pay the equivalent of a 10% of total units at 80% AMI, including fractional units. And the proposal that we're looking at is based on square footage. And it would be based on a formula that generates a per, a per square foot fee. So if the fee was, I believe that the example fee that ARCH uses is $39 a square foot. So if your new home, because I'm not very good at math right now, was was 2,000 square feet, it would it would, what's that, 74, at $39 a square foot is 74,000? 78, sorry, see, it's been a long day. $78,000 would be would be the fee that you would have to pay for that new home.
I thought.
The 10% is factored into the $39 per square foot, using the formula that ARCH has. So ARCH has designed a formula for 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 per square foot fees for single and middle housing, single family and middle housing types. And they've done some, their, so the the formula, that that's an example of how the formula would work. Now, that that's, it's 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 site specific. The formula is not generically applied across the city. It really depends on the land value inputs, the products, the market. So there's variables that go into the model. And when we get a proposal for development, we would run it through the model with ARCH and we'd be given the fee for what that would be. And then that would be what the what the builder would have to pay, whether it's a single family home, whether it's a triplex, or whether it's a stack flat with its number of units. So ARCH cities are the ones working on this currently. The HB 1110 does say that a city may do this. It doesn't preclude a city from doing this. It's that the city's a lack of, we're not required to do it. However, the recommendation from ARCH is that with this up zone that's happening, that there is a value capture brought back for the purpose of a housing program within the city. And the city council is directing us to evaluate a program of this type and to come to them with a proposal with recommendations on if we were going to do this, assuming the direction is to do it, what is a program that would work for the city?
So if the end goal is to make houses affordable, I do not believe that this will make houses affordable. This will make houses more expensive. And I'm going to agree with, it will make them affordable for a moment. Let's say it will make them, no, I'm not going to agree. I'm going to say they're going to collect this money, this penalty. And they're going to put it into an account. And the end goal is to make Samamish more affordable. How will we be able to make use of this money to build affordable houses? And again, is this applying only to developers building subdivisions? Or does it also apply to individual citizens building homes for their families?
So this is where the discretion of the commission to offer amendments or or modifications to what's being proposed, specifically in the exemptions is a really good place to start. If you wanted to propose to the council that you exempt owner occupied buildings or you defer payment for owner occupied buildings until a point of market sale, you could do that. The challenge that I've seen over the years is developers will, what's the right way to say this? They'll make it appear like they're, it's owner occupied. They'll put it in their child's name. They'll do, there's all kinds of things I've seen. We already have this requirement with shoreline properties. We're under the Shoreline Management Act, you're required to obtain a shoreline substantial development permit for the purpose of construction of a single family home. However, owner occupied, non-spec homes are exempt. So we see developers routinely put their name on the title, put their kid's name on the title, build the house, say it, say it's for owner occupancy, and then turn around and sell it a week later. So that is one of the challenges is administering the program. A workaround that we have discussed for that internally, if the commission was to recommend this, one friendly addition we would add is that it's exempt until the first point of market sale. And that a note goes on title that says that the fee will be calculated at the point of first market sale, based on the formula in place at the time of sale. So that way, a homeowner may retain it, build their home, retain it, not pay the fee, live in the home, keep it, and the point of which it goes to market sale is the point where where it would then have to pay the fee.
Should we ask Jeff to comment on this, what the other cities have done? Jeff, do you have any comment on this, what the other jurisdiction have done, how they have handled this issue?
Yeah.
Trump brings it up.
So, I mean, you're all raising good points. I think what David just described is one of our concerns, and we would want to do some more due diligence on the exemptions because there's ways to sort of, you know, game the system as as David described, and it becomes a challenge for the city to sort of ensure compliance around that. Just backing up a little bit, I mean, the premise of this is that the city and the state through these zoning changes are adding development capacity and value to the properties. So that's where the the fee comes into place. It's supposed to be offset. It's not capturing the full amount of the increased potential value from the up zone, just a portion of that. Also, I would note in David's example earlier, for a single family home, they would just pay a fractional fee, right, of of 10% of that fee? So they wouldn't have to pay the full unit cost price. And I think, you know, it kind of comes down to, you know, fairness in a way. I mean, if a family is looking to move to Samamish and they don't have the capacity to buy a lot and have to buy a builder, you know, at the end of the day, it's kind of the same issue in some ways. And so I do get a little bit concerned about the fairness piece. And also, the new ADU bill has restrictions on cities' ability to require owner occupancy. And so I would want to get some legal advice on that issue as well. Also, would note that folks could develop, you know, smaller units, smaller ADUs, those are proposed to be exempt currently. A number of larger homes could potentially do carve out units, you know, those would be exempt. So those are just some of my initial thoughts and concerns. I think there's a management challenge and I think people would, you know, try to take measures to avoid the fee. And that might be difficult for the city to track.
Can I add one more thing? Because I, one of the comments I heard was that, you know, how does this make housing affordable? And so based on the the Housing 101 thing we went to with ARCH, one of the things that they talked about was the the funding stack. You know, how do you get to have adequate funding to the point where you can build affordable housing in a city? And the first is having a program that requires or that is flexible, where you can get, you know, reduce setbacks or a simplified process and it's it's easier to build the affordable housing. The second is, what local fund partnerships do you have? Are you able to then bring money to the table in order to help the project along? The next is, are you able to then get funding from an agency like ARCH that has housing trust fund dollars that can be added to the local contribution? Then finally, if you get past all of those, then you become a very attractive recipient to outside dollars. The, you know, some of these Amazon housing dollars and Microsoft housing dollars that we're hearing about are going to those cities that have programs where they have local contributions, whereby they have a simplified permit process, they have local contributions, and they have other other partner agency dollars. Then then they're they're amplifying those dollars with matches, with with multiplication in many cases. So what what's happening is those cities that don't have those programs, that don't have those matched or those local dollars or those housing trust fund dollars are not recipients of those programs.
How many, how many cities have taken advantage of this?
I don't have that statistic offhand.
Do we have any? I know that Seattle.
We do not have any.
My recommendation is we need to to study this more because, again, we want to make housing affordable and we are here for the people who live here and the people who want to move and live here. And penalizing them, I don't think it's gonna, it's just gonna be fair to them. And I don't see how this money can be used. And again, there is nothing that shows us that cities who did this use this money to make housing affordable. So it's, I personally recommend against it. I'll just leave it there.
Well, that was actually my question to Jeff. Jeff, do you know of any city how they handle this issue of the 10% threshold?
In terms of how they apply it?
Yes. If they have similar concern that we're hearing from DeShawn.
Yeah, I mean, the best example, and I think we've referenced this, is the city of Redmond. They have had a 10% affordability requirement. I believe they're opting it a little bit based on their financial analysis around 13%. And they are removing the 10%, or they're, sorry, the 10 unit threshold that they previously had. So they are proposing a similar scenario. And I believe there's some statistics that's, you know, maybe Paul Stickney presented or someone did around affordable units that have been produced. We could see if we could find that for you. So that would, if if you're looking for a city to look at, again, not in terms of, you know, it's it's a different community, but just in terms of the basics of what they're requiring, that would be the the best example to look at.
Redmond does have a housing program. They do provide match funds and they have been a major recipient of of those amplification dollars that I was talking about that come from Amazon and and Microsoft and others. So because of that, they have been able to produce a a large number of mid-rise housing that's mixed, you know, mixed in incomes. And there are some deeper affordability units and some 80% AMI units. And as a result of those, that that program, they're actually seeing it be be brought, being built, you know, go vertical. So that is an example of where affordable housing is being provided as a result of a program like this.
So I had a thought about throwing some spaghetti against the chalkboard and see if it sticks. So decoupling the overlay from base zoning. So if someone comes in to build a single family or frankly, anything under the base zoning, do we apply the 10% there? Because they're not getting any additional benefit that they could get with the middle housing overlay. And there's this, with the overlay, you are gaining some value.
That's fair. The the challenge that I see with that, and I don't know whether this sticks, is that you cannot make regulations for middle housing more restrictive than you can for single family. Now, you could carve out some limited exemptions. I mean, I I think it's worth, if that was your recommendation to the council, we would take that to the council. And we would continue to research it and evaluate it. One thing I want to highlight in in response to the comment that, you know, we need to study this more is that jurisdictions like like Redmond, who have had these rules in place for a while, have, you know, had some moments with the rules where they've had to come back and spool up their their code amendment machine and change the code because there were some issues they were facing. And we are planning to do that next year. We're planning to bring these back full circle. And and the the challenge is, is that once you adopt your your regulations and you provide that up zone, you cannot retroactively go back and then apply, you do not apply an affordability program under state law. You cannot retroactively go back a year later and apply it to that rezone that's already happened. So that is why we're looking at this now. We know that we can amend it down the line. That's different than applying it new. But in response to your question, you could propose that. I see that there might be a wrinkle with HB 1110 and that can't be more restrictive. However, the other argument that I hear from ARCH and from others is that that you still are benefiting from the value to your property presented by the rezone, even though you're not developing it to its highest and best use. So on that premise, you're given the the value, you're choosing to not take advantage of the highest and best use, should you be exempted from from paying the fee? It's, you know, it's a bit of a philosophical question. And, you know, I, if I am tasked with administering an affordable housing program, my hat, that hat on, my answer would be that all new development should pay the fee. But if I'm tasked with with trying to find a balance with housing productivity, affordable housing, market housing, I would say that what you said makes perfect sense. So it just depends on your perspective and what you're trying to achieve. I know that the direction from the majority of the council is to to develop and administer an affordable housing program.
Can I jump in and ask a couple of questions? So one of these is very specific. So if someone buys a empty lot in a in an area that has a, a, what am I trying to say? A housing, a covenant, yeah, in place, do they, and then want to build a house? Does this apply to them?
It's a great point.
Because they get zero value because those covenants.
Doesn't apply. No, you're you're right about that. So maybe there's a way to add that as a carve out. As. Doesn't apply. No, you're right about that. So maybe there's a way to add that as a carve out as an exception.
It kind of feels like there are some examples like that where.
Or where a lot is so small that you couldn't foreseeably achieve a middle housing product on that lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there might be easements and other covenants that are restricting development.
Where the applicant demonstrates that middle housing is not attainable on the property.
Mark, let me follow up with that question, your question. David, if that example that Chairman gave you, if that property or the gentleman that has bought that piece of property is in an area controlled by the association, so the 10% would not apply now?
Well, that's, I think, what we're contemplating. Because as the way the program is designed, if you had a vacant lot, which you happen to find one in an area that was recently platted, subject to an HOA covenant restriction that said that only single family was allowed, and middle housing therefore, according to HB 1110, does not apply, and you were to build the unit that according to this, the way we've designed it, that you would have to pay the fee. So by saying when it doesn't apply or when the applicant demonstrates that middle housing is not applicable or not attainable, because I think, can think of a host of other scenarios where middle housing wouldn't apply or would not be attainable or achievable, and then that would result in you not actually getting the benefit of the upzone, should you actually be required to pay the fee.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. The other question I have, and maybe this is a Jeff question, I'm not sure. Is it reasonable for us to restrict the use of the funds collected to, within the city of Sammamish city limits? Is that a, or is there some reason that that's not a reasonable thing to put in here?
Well, I think one of the biggest reasons why it's reasonable is that those would go towards us meeting our affordable housing obligations that we're supposed to plan for. And sure, there might be some way to sort of get credit, but why would we want to charge folks a fee in Sammamish to develop affordable housing in another community? I mean, I get it would address the regional issues, but it wouldn't address the local issues that we identified early in the comp planning, like having opportunities for people to live in or consume Amish. So I think it's a reasonable policy decision and certainly cities could go in that direction.
That's kind of what I thought as well. The only thing I can envision arguing against myself here is if it turns out that all of this doesn't generate as much, as many dollars as we think, then eventually you have a small pot of dollars sitting there doing nothing for a long time. And that's actually the worst case scenario. So, okay. Other questions?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah, I've got, actually, just one clarification, what we're being asked to move forward. Because there are some portions in here where it's pending policy decisions. So when we move this forward to council, there would still be those to be decided items, like property tax exemption, bonus units, and they're written in the regulations right now and yellow highlighted, right? So we won't be discussing and making any kind of policy decisions on those this evening. Okay, I assume that, but just wanted to be really clear.
Yeah, I would love to say that we could develop and adopt an MFTE program in a matter of an hour here right now, because then we'd be making serious progress. But that's just not the case. That's a much bigger policy discussion.
And so that'll happen at some point next year.
With the Town Center updates is the next phase of that, which you're going to be taking up here immediately in the new year.
Yeah, we have some pro forma analysis we've done as part of the Town Center work we're going to present to you on the 15th. And it shows how the MFTE program impacts feasibility, and it does have a big impact. So we look forward to presenting that to you in a couple of weeks.
Bonus units and regulatory relief. Well, we kind of have achieved regulatory relief on some level through the, through the faith-based parcels rules that we have, right? That is regulatory relief on some grounds. But that really is targeting, I think, Town Center and then really the future subareas in the Pine Lake and Inglewood areas, where we're going to be looking at it in the years to come. We're going to hopefully be doing what we call, what Jeff came up with as a corridors and centers study that will focus on the relationship between Inglewood and Pine Lake and 228th and what's happening between those because it's really an important corridor in the city. We want to try to understand some of the challenges around transportation, you know, peak demand, all those things. That's another story. But just wanting to explain where we'll really start to get into these discussions as part of those policy efforts that are on the work plan for any time from '25 through '28.
So there will be a portion of this, TBD. Hey, so while I have this, in the implementation provisions, so 2110, 050, there's a set of, it sounds like requirements. So for example, affordable housing units must contain a mix of the number of bedrooms that is generally proportionate to the bedroom mix of units in the overall development. And as I read this, it felt like, well, we'd like the affordable units to kind of fit in, right? But it also, in a way, makes them more difficult to be affordable. So I could see sort of the outside, you know, one of these also talks about roof lines and so forth, so that there's a look and feel. But when you get into something that's like number of bedrooms, not so visible from the outside and can make a big difference in the price. So I'm wondering, you know, what the trade-offs are between sort of the fit in the neighborhoods, in the development versus the desire that we have to make units or houses more affordable. And that was one that kind of popped out to me that said, yeah, maybe we're putting some restrictions in here that make it more difficult to make an affordable home.
Yeah, really good question. And I think, you know, like most things, there's trade-offs to both, right? On the sort of side of requiring the units to be more similar, you know, allows for more integration, you ensure that it's taking place within the same neighborhood and some of the other kind of exterior qualities that you described. And I think, you know, the townhouses that are being developed in Town Center are a good example. You know, very nice units, but since it's essentially one unit typology, all of those affordable units are that typology. So they're getting a very nice unit, but the, you know, delta between the cost to produce it and what you can sell it for is a lot. So, you know, perhaps the bigger trade-off might be perhaps more units that you might get out of if you gave some flexibility on that. I think that would be an important trade-off. I would also consider, you know, who are the units being targeted for? I mean, we wouldn't necessarily want all studios or all super large units, but having, you know, certainly some family-sized units, I think, would be advisable. So there's definitely different rules, you know, rules of thumb on this. But those are kind of the things that I see most cities kind of wrestling with in these programs.
What would you recommend regulating it at?
For bedrooms? Not.
Not.
Yeah, why?
Right.
I mean, it would be the same thing, like, why not have the number of bathrooms? And bathrooms are pretty expensive. And shouldn't everybody have the same number of bathrooms as your neighbor? It's like, not necessarily.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're really thinking about affordability, as somebody who grew up in a very small two-bedroom, one-bathroom house with a bunch of people in it, it's like you could do that.
So the question there is if the developer is required to make it affordable at that level, then what that is, is doing is providing relief to the developer because they're now lowering their costs to still make the unit apply at the 80% AMI range.
Which should lower the cost, which means that they could lower the.
Well, they have to sell it no matter, their price is fixed, right?
Their price is fixed because it's at 80% of AMI for that, for that region, right? So the price is set by way of the formula. So if they're allowed to trim it down, then it's a benefit to them. It's fine, I get it. But the.
I find that very confusing.
When we talked about this last time, and if you remember, I was doing the math on the side. 80% AMI, you can afford the house that sells for about $600,000.
Correct.
The average selling price of these townhomes are, it's not less than a million and a half.
Correct.
Someone will be subsidizing about $900,000.
Correct.
I don't see any way for that to be absorbed by someone. My recommendation, which I gave last time when we spoke about this, is for the developer to focus on a development that's built to be affordable, the entire development. Not just take a house that's the same as the other houses and sell it at a discounted price. I use the Habitat for Humanities as an example. That's an affordable house. It's a good house. It's, I'm not going to say it's better than the one where you grew up, but I bet it has nicer finishes than the ones from 40 years ago or 50 years ago. They are good and they are affordable. That will solve the problem. But to say that someone is gonna subsidize $900,000 for every house, so how many houses can we afford at that? 10?
Well, that's the point that I've heard repeatedly from the development community is that somebody's basically winning the lottery because they're being subsidized. Now, there are covenants that go on the property that requires that if you sell it, that you can't, you still have to sell it at that same rate.
That's down the road. I'm talking about day one.
The challenge is, so in the Habitat example, it was built by a not-for-profit builder. The challenge is, is that the building community will always sell the product for the maximum the market will bring. So as long as the building community is doing that, we could trim it down, but they're still going to sell it for what the market will bring. And maybe if we're requiring them to build lower-end units, then the market won't bring as much, but we're still not getting affordable housing.
I can build you a house today using marble and fixtures that are coming from Italy and so on. I can assure you, it's going to be more expensive than if I go and get you some other flooring or other solid surfaces. That's how you make it affordable. The market, no matter how they try to make it more expensive, they won't because it just won't add up. But to go and build to the current standards and think that you can reduce it, we are gonna write it as a policy, but it won't solve the problem. And I'm caring more about solving the problem instead of just collecting money.
Some cities have seen an increase, not in the East Coast, in rough houses, rough-in houses. And what's happening is builders, there's a building and there's a market for homes that are mostly finished.
East Coast is different. Seattle is different than anywhere.
My point is, is that that's an example of what you're talking about, where they're trying to bring the product to market, get it to the point where it's livable, hand it over to the buyer, who then can finish it as they see fit, put their sweat equity into it, put the finishings that they see needed into it. I don't know how to regulate that into place, which is the challenge.
I think a couple of points. You know, I've been involved in various roles in affordable housing projects, from, you know, working directly for cities, being involved in design projects. And I am very receptive to the notion that we need to make housing construction more affordable to help address the issue. And, you know, it is often the case, I'm sure many of you know this, that through subsidies, the cost to produce affordable housing units can often be more than it's required to build market units. So I'm very receptive to that issue. A couple of things. One, we did do a pro forma analysis on the for-sale townhomes. And believe it or not, they actually can absorb that fee. The profitability for our pro forma done by a real estate economist on for-sale townhomes is 40%. And so they are actually able to absorb that fee. But I think the way that we should think about it, and this is kind of to David's point, you know, if we make the housing cheaper, then it's just a benefit to the developer. But we're going to have a calculation, right, for what that fee would be, even if they provide the units and don't pay the fee. And then it's a matter of how could you best utilize that? And if you could get, you know, more units out of it for the same amount of money, rather than building one townhouse, you build some other units. If you did allow a fee-in- lieu program, that's another mechanism where you could use those funds to create something that would be maybe more affordable than the products that's being produced in the project. And then the other thing, for districts that allow a range of housing types, and we also know from the Town Center feasibility analysis that apartments are basically not feasible right now, particularly if they have underground or structured parking associated with them due to construction costs and the cost of financing. So I think if we were able to keep the contribution the developer is making, regardless if it's onsite or fee, and then figure out how flexible we want to be to address the issue of, you know, not building expensive housing that's then, you know, sold as affordable, then I think we could, you know, kind of address the equity issue relative to what the developer needs to provide, but also give the city some flexibility in terms of policy to how best to deliver those units. So those are just, you know, a few thoughts. And, you know, definitely appreciate the comments on, you know, cost of construction and trying to keep that more reasonable.
I'd like to come back just for one or two more moments. So the reason I was looking at the number of bedrooms is that a two-bedroom house or dwelling will have less value than a three or four-bedroom. So when you say, and also less expensive to build. So I don't understand when you say, well, they'll all be sold at the same price. It would be a different, a different value and a different price. So it seems that that is one way to have slightly less restrictive codes that may be on the margin, but maybe make it a little bit easier to have some affordable units. Another one is, that's in here, is also saying that if other units in the development have the ability to convert over to electric, that that should be true in the affordable units. A noble goal, helpful for, you know, future electrical conversions, which we'd like to have for green gas, but also adds to cost. So is that something that we want to have? In a section, it says implementation for affordable units. So something to think about. And frankly, I don't know if I would make a motion to adjust the regulations as written or say, it's okay now and maybe in the future we may want to change that. So I don't, I'm saying I'm not feeling that strongly that those things need to be changed. But I did want to bring that up as, you know, some things that are in the regulations right now that could add to the cost and make units, make it a little less achievable to have affordable units built in Sammamish.
Owning a house, it's not just about day one, and it's also about down the road, maintenance. You can only afford the $600,000 house. I'm giving you a million and a half dollar house. Do you think you're going to be able to afford maintaining that house? You won't. So I'm putting you in a house that I know you won't be able to afford. I'm gonna come back and keep subsidizing you every month? I don't think so. So I'm setting you to fail. That's what this is. That's why I keep going back. Ask the developer to build an entire subdivision as an affordable housing subdivision.
So we have to attract a not-for-profit builder by having a housing program to do that. So I think this is where the circle is completed, is where if we have a funding stream and we have that account that is there to partner in funding it, that we can attract a builder to do, a not-for-profit builder to do that. I would present that I cannot envision a situation where a for-profit builder would be willing to do that.
Builders, they build for profit. They will set their margin and they will build it. You can say, I want to build the house for $200,000 or $2 million. They will build it for you. If you want the 200, they will build it for you. If you want the 2 million, they will build it for you. They will make their profit. Either way, they don't have to be a non-for-profit or a non-for-profit. It's, it doesn't have to be a special builder. Any builder can do it. You just need to give them the right specs that they can build that will end up with an affordable house.
What we found when we did a deep dive into the regulations as part of Phase 2 is that developers want to build the largest homes and square footage as possible in order to maximize their investment. So they want the smallest lot, the least amount of road, and the most square footage. That's, I think, if you look at the trends of what's been built in Sammamish, I think particularly prior to the Base 2 Development Regulations update, that's kind of what you would see.
But Jeff, remember, what's the end goal? To make houses affordable. This will not make them affordable.
I think, you know, there's a couple of different angles to take right here or take with this. One is, you know, my understanding, so my sense is, is that the commission is somewhat out of alignment with the majority of the council on this. I'm just saying.
Wait, 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 wait. Are we talking about, still talking about a 10% threshold?
I'm talking about an affordable housing program period.
Because I'm hearing two different issues on it. One is a 10% issue. One is a ten percent issue. The other one that Mike brought up is number of bedrooms and how that relates to affordability. Which one we are at odds with the council? For both?
Well, so I don't know where to go with this.
Let me just clarify my position. I am one hundred percent with affordable houses. I want to see affordable houses built that nurses, firefighters, schoolteachers, the people that they are not as lucky as others. They can afford it, and I wanna see them living in this community. What I'm saying, what's proposed here, will not make that happen. We are penalizing individuals who are building houses for their families with a ten percent fee, that we cannot even prove that it will work or it has worked for someone. We are asking someone to subsidize a huge amount. We are talking about things that I do not believe they will work. I'm just asking, show me how they will work. Show me somewhere where it worked, somewhere where it provided affordable houses. I want to see affordable houses. I don't wanna create a fund for the city to just sit in a bank. I want to see affordable houses. This will not provide them. I don't believe this will provide them.
That's fair. I'm not gonna argue either way with that. I mean, you know, it's your community. I just work here. And I think my point is, is that you can't regulate your way into what you're talking about. There's no feasible way to do that. You have to actually have the builder want to do that. I would say that today, under today's regulations, under the regulations the city has had in place since it incorporated, under the regulations of King County, the builders could have done that. The builders are not gonna choose to do that. So no matter what we do with regulations, unless you're able to mandate the type of range that's put in, mandate the types of flooring that's put in, which we don't have the ability to do. So what I'm saying is, I respectfully disagree. And my sense is, is that if we wanna build affordable homes, that we need to massively disrupt the building industry. And the manner that you're talking about is massively disrupt the building industry, which we're really not talking about doing here, nor do we have the equipment to do it, the staff or the, I guess, the willpower to do that. You know, we have a hard enough time regulating impervious surface.
Could I just offer a comment? I think my perception of it is, in clarifying what you said, you said that we're not in alignment with the council. I think that the issue here is that, not so much that we're not in alignment with the council, we're just struggling with how the details will get implemented. Because I think everybody is saying the same thing. If we do what we've done, we'll get what we got. And so we're trying to think of doing something different, and nobody is really sure what that different thing is. This is a suggestion, and there's not a lot of evidence to prove one way or another what it'll do. And so we're, of course, guessing. But I think that actually, we're all wanting to see, as Hisham said, more affordable housing in the city of Sammamish. It's not the objectives that we're arguing about or discussing, I should say. It's more of the implementation and what will work and what won't. But I would say again, I really do believe the old axiom, if we do what we did, we'll get what we got. Like you said, King County and old regulations turned out to be almost nothing. And I'm not sure this will turn out to be anything either. But I do think we do need to try something, because otherwise, we're gonna get nowhere. And I, you know, I come back to every one of these meetings, I come back to the same thing. I've got a twenty-four-year-old and a twenty-one-year-old, and I would love for them to be able to choose to live here someday. I think that's a pipe dream that will never happen, and that's very disappointing to me personally. But that's kind of the, that's where I think for a lot of people, it brings it home, is that they would like to be able to, either themselves or for their families or somebody that they know, be able to live here. I have a friend who's a firefighter who's struggling to live here. We would like to figure out how to do that, but the answers are not simple. And so I don't think we're in disagreement with the council that we need to do something. We're just not sure what. So I just wanna be careful that when somebody listens to this on 1.5 speed, that maybe they catch that. We're in alignment on the goals, we're just not sure about the implementation, the tactics.
Yeah, I think to Mark's point is, we're, at least in this first go, where do we draw the line in the sand in terms of some sort of generation of revenue? Because Arch does have a, unfortunately, you weren't on the commission when Arch did its 101 session. And they ran through a host of examples that they've partnered in and others have done in terms of exactly what David was talking about. We're bringing together partners, nonprofit builders, because they exist out there. But you gotta have something at the table to make it happen. And so far, Sammamish hasn't had that last piece to bring something home here. It's always gone somewhere else. So if we can figure out where to draw that line in terms of getting some level of additional revenue that we can bring to the table with Arch or other partners, we'd have a starting point. I don't know exactly where that line is. David explained that if we exempted construction on base zoning, there might be possible to collect something at sale. So there might be some mechanisms to provide the relief on the front end, but still have a way to get to it. And clearly, if you're gonna apply the middle housing overlay, you're gonna get a huge benefit and I think should be paying the fee or providing the housing. So I think it boils down to exactly where we draw the line and how it's drawn.
Couple of points related to that. I mean, in Arch's analysis, right, they look at the increased value or profit, right? And, you know, we've chosen a ten percent proposal, which I think is more modest than maybe they hoped for or thought was possible through the pro forma analysis. So we've set the requirements relatively low. I don't believe it's gonna slow down or impact development. And nor do I think a fee on a 1.5 or $2 million home is gonna impact the affordability of that home. What it's gonna do is generate money or affordable units for the firefighters and those folks, because there's simply no mechanism to provide that housing for them now. So it's correct. It doesn't make the unit that generates the fee more affordable. But I don't think it will impact the production of those units nor have a big impact on the cost of those units, because they're already so elevated. But it would, in fact, provide some revenue if we could figure out the best way to utilize it to develop those units within the city.
Can I ask one slightly related question? So in an ideal world, at market price, what would an eighty percent AMI, so 600K home look like? And if we were, then what would like, say, an 800K home look like? Is it even possible in Sammamish to build a home at that price?
So the way, I think one of the things that I'm hearing is that the, you know, the way the rules currently are drafted and the way the rules have worked in the town center and in most cities, is that it requires that the builder build a unit on the property that looks and feels like the other units, but they're required to sell it for a discount to somebody. So what happens is Arch, who is ours, a regional coalition for housing, we're an Arch-member city. It's a bunch of eastside cities that have an interlocal agreement that work together. Arch has a roster of people who wanna buy homes that fit certain income restrictions. They meet the profile of what a good buyer would be for that type of program. And that includes lots of classes on maintenance. It's, you know, making sure you know what you're getting into. And what happens is, they run a lottery whereby somebody is able to enter the lottery to receive the, you know, to be able to buy one of those homes at that rate. And as long as that person maintains, so every year, they check the income. That's a whole nother thing. And if you no longer fit in the income, well, then there's an impact on, you know, there's a fee you have to pay if you go out of that income group. There's different, it's a whole program that's kind of intense to manage. So there's that downside to it, too, is the more we ramp this up and the more units we have as a result of it, then there is more administration fee that goes along with it, right? So now you're paying a fee to run a program, to build affordable housing or manage affordable housing. And now the money's not all going to affordable housing, it's going to administration. I just wanna be totally transparent with some of the downsides to this. The upside is, is that if you're able to set it right, at ten percent, for example, and you're dealing with projects that mostly are fractional units, they're never gonna actually build the units. You never really run into that scenario. Not only that, but they have the option of not building the unit if they did have whole units and could pay the fee. And if you set the fee and the rate low enough, they will pay the fee. Then what that does is it allows you to have dollars. So one project that was brought up is, was actually an Arch project that had other funding stack associated with it, was the Habitat cottages. So you could see projects like the Habitat cottages be brought online in the city as a result of that funding source that then are made available to people at the different trims, smaller building. And you could get more of them in place of one of the units that you might see built. So this is really the angle we've been trying to take, is how do we get to a point where we're getting a fee that allows us to prop up a program, to bring these types of projects, like Habitat-like projects, to the city? Or even other, you know, apartments? Apartments are a great place for people who have different, you know, conditions in their life or a different point in their life. But then there's also people who wanna live in a detached unit. Maybe we're building duplexes or townhomes or at a smaller scale, kind of like the Arch, or, excuse me, the Habitat example. So that's, I think, the crux of it. Hopefully, that explains it, is that, you know, when we're seeing these units, I think that's one of the points of tension here, is that when we're saying, hey, you have to build a unit that looks and feels like the other units, but sell it at the eighty percent AMI rate, it's not really, it's like somebody winning the lottery, and it's a big hit to the builder who now has to build this unit and then can't actually recover the cost of building it.
Right. So the point I was trying to make, so I know what Hisham said earlier, is that like, so at the town center, an average house is over like, approximately, say, 900K over the affordable rate? So what I'm trying to ask is, what would a house that's at its market rate, if you sell at its market rate with 600K, what would that look like?
If you sold a house at market for 600K, what would it look like? It would be a two-bedroom, 1,200-square-foot house with virtually no yard.
Would it be a townhouse? Would it be a apartment?
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm basing it off of a vision in my head of all the stuff I see for sale, the permits we see, the values we see. But, you know, there, I feel like it would be a, if you wanted to see a house on the market that would sell for $600,000 in Sammamish, probably a townhome, very small townhome. But generally, we're not seeing them.
There isn't one. He's a realtor. He's checking his debt. He's saying, no, it doesn't exist.
Well, in part because builders are unwilling to build them. And this is my point, is that we can't regulate our way into that. You have to actually, on the opposite side, is incentivize it. Well, the way to, either, I guess, either penalize it, or I don't wanna say that word, because that's not the right word to use here. But, you know, to, we have to be able to create the program that creates the revenue and ultimately can deliver the units at a better size and better trim level.
We are a victim of our own success. So any house that you might envision at 600,000 dollars, there are people who wanna live here, and they will offer 1.2 million for that house. You can't create a detached house for 600,000, because there will always be, and I know of a couple of examples of houses that I would consider falling down and unlivable, that people paid 600 and 800,000 for.
So just, you know, just for reference, sort of, I moved to the Seattle area in 2003, and I bought my first home in 2003 in Shoreline. And it was an 800-square-foot home, and it was 120,000 dollars. That same home that we still own probably would sell for about 900,000 now.
Okay, so I think what we should do, so we'll have the public hearing, we'll have time for debate afterwards. I think we should make sure that we're clear about the exemptions. So for example, where there are covenants. Because if there's a fee, and I'm building in an area where I can't get the benefit of additional value through, you know, changing the property, I've just raised the price of the house by that fee. So that's moving in the wrong direction. So work on the exemptions a little bit. And we might consider whether or not to free up a couple of the regulations that can add some additional cost, like the bedrooms or the conversion around electric. I don't feel quite as strongly about that, but that's another way to, you know, make it a little less burdensome. And I recognize that on the builders, but, you know, it addresses their cost. And, you know, all the rest of the regulations, since there's a lot of other ones, too, I really appreciate the work, you know, Jeff, that you and David, you and the staff have done in addressing the comments that have been made over the past couple of meetings and making all those changes. There are a number of changes, fine tunings, and it's nice to see those in there. And so I'm very comfortable with all the other stuff that we've gone through. And so it was really the affordability requirements which were new and required some additional conversation. And it feels like we haven't had a chance to quite bake those quite as much as in some of the other areas. So anyways, that's what I'm thinking about, how we can move forward.
Mike, can you elaborate a little bit on the relationship between affordability and number of bedrooms? I don't get that.
No, I still think, and I hear what you're saying, and what the market prices are, but there's still, and Hisham, this is kind of like what you're saying. If you put marble and Italian fixtures in, the cost of the unit goes up. And just dealing with regulations in general. One of the reasons there was a House Bill to streamline regulations is to reduce some of the costs. So when I read through this, there are a couple of the regulations that is like, you know, are they really essential if what our goal is, is to help promote affordability? And I was like, probably not. Will they make a big difference? Yeah, I mentioned, they're probably on the margin. So, but that's the example, so.
You know, one of the things that, you know, I'm sorry, I have to say this. I probably shouldn't, but I will, is that I find really challenging is when the master builder community states that the regulations are causing the home prices to go up. Because if you could find me a builder that if they had a shorter, easier permit process, is gonna sell the house for less than what the market will bring, I'll retire, I'll resign. Find me that builder.
I totally get that. But the amount that we have to subsidize would be different.
Many of the proposed changes, they will actually provide more houses, and they will make houses more affordable, many of them. The one I'm looking at here, I disagree with that. That's the one that I completely disagree with. I don't wanna penalize people for being successful, for needing to build a house for their own families, just like the one with the covenants. I'm building a house for my wife and my kids. Why do I pay a ten percent penalty?
One comment, kind of back to your suggestions, Mike, is, I guess I'm curious and what David or Jeff have to say. How realistic is it that anybody who's a developer is going to actually build and sell these affordable units? Aren't they all just gonna pay the fee?
They will.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really, it's hard for me to envision that.
Unless we don't permit it for some scale of projects. But yeah, so other than that, I mean, obviously, it depends on the way that you set the fee. But that's been the, I believe that's been the case in Seattle, where developers typically pay the fee.
Arch's recommendation is that you, anything over 0.66 is rounded to a whole unit for a requirement of affordability. So that if you're, so they're actually, they're proposing something that's far more aggressive than what we're looking at here. So we've looked at ways to fine tune this and to enter into the housing program world without really trying to, we're trying to minimize the impact on the building community while still achieving the goal of propping up a housing program. And I think that this represents, I think, the least we can, the, you know, assuming we get the exceptions right, the exemptions right, you know, things like, like you could, if you're building it yourself, maybe you're exempt until you sell it for the first time. Or... Or maybe that, that, maybe you're not required to do it at all if you're building it for yourself. Maybe there's an exemption for, you know, projects of less than four units. So that if it's one unit, you're, you're not required to do it. If it's a short plat of four units, you're not required to do it. Or if it's, maybe it's three units period, including middle housing. So that's a, you know, it, that is apparent lot. So if you're, you're actually doing a bigger project, you know, that then you're required to, 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 to have that apply, whether it's a traditional subdivision more than three units or whether it's a middle housing development of more than three units, that then you're required to, with the first three exempt. I'm just trying to come up with ways to right-size it.
That's good. Because earlier when we said this, you said many developers will take advantage of it
and they will start using their kids and their families' names. And I would assume the majority of the developers are honest people that they won't resort to doing things like this.
I've, I've seen it a few times, so maybe I'm a little, a little jaded by it all, but-
And I do think that is a reality that people could try to, to game the system. But one, one thought would be to just exempt a certain amount of square footage. So maybe the first square footage, amount of square footage, you know, is exempt. So if you're building a modest, single-family home of, within that point, F5, FAR or something like that, you know, maybe that's exempt. But that's also different from someone building, you know, like a 9,000 square foot home and then getting exemption. And, you know, at the end of the day, someone could build a home for their family and sell it two years later. Someone could buy a home from a builder and live there for 30 years. At the end of the day, I don't know if there's that much of a distinction and I would assume that most of the projects in Sammamish are built by builders.
Jeff, you mentioned early on something kind of caught my attention. You said that typical developers, they have a profit margin as much as 40%?
Well, they would love to have a profit margin of 40%. Typically, they will not have 40%. We have done, and you'll see this on the 15th, but I'll preview a little bit. We looked at three typologies in the town center in order to, you know, inform the affordability work there. We looked at townhouses, for-sale townhouses. Those were very feasible, 40% profit. With the affordability requirement, that would cut it to 35%. So again, you have the fee that's calculated and then it becomes an issue of how do we best apply that? You know, if we could get three units instead of two, is that better? Or if we, you know, put them in an adjacent neighborhood, would that be better because it was more affordable to build there? Or if we put it into a city program, we could build 300 units together or something and get some economies of scale. So there's a lot of ways, I think, to, to think about that. So, yeah.
But generally speaking, does the profitability of the developer decreases by going from single-family to multifamily and affordable housing? Does he make less money if he makes the substantial?
Yeah, but it, it, it really depends on the product type. So let me finish with the other, I forgot to go through the rest of the, the typology. So then the next one was garden-style apartments and those are not feasible today. Rental townhouses are also not feasible because there's a premium on homeownership. Mid-rise apartment buildings like you see in town center today where you're dealing with structured parking, those are not feasible today. I think there's like a negative 15% return on that. So that's why we tried to set the affordability requirements at a fairly modest level so that it's not impacting production over time and understanding, you know, that the affordability or the feasibility or profit margins really vary based on the construction type and the unit types. So in terms of applying an affordable housing requirement, you know, in the case of for-sale townhomes, it's, it's still very feasible even with the requirement. I think it brought the profit margin from 40% to 35%.
Can you share those statistics with us as far as the profitability that you just mentioned?
Yes, you'll be getting them at the October 15th meeting if you're-
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Okay. Good. Okay. But if you're interested, you know, you could watch the city council meeting. I gave that presentation the other night, or if David wants to share any of the materials in advance.
We're going to be publishing it real soon. You'll get it.
Yeah, so we could just publish the slide deck since it's pretty much done.
October 15th.
So we're going to need to extend. We have public hearing too, so I propose extending till 9:15.
So moved second.
It's been moved in second at extended 9:15. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, no. Thank you. Okay. I, I had, before we leave this, I did want to, Jeff, make one suggestion. Actually, there was, Paul Stickney made some written comment about it and I had written a note about it too. The, and we're going a different direction here, but the, the topic of the hardscape and how the hardscape works and how that compares with the existing code and making sure that we're not more restrictive, I think we're actually less restrictive, so that probably works. I had a hard time kind of tracking that through this set of code. So maybe if someone on the council level is interested, you might do a little bit of being prepared to explain that. Maybe they won't, maybe they'll focus on the, the 2110 affordability like we did. But that was one topic in here. I struggled to track it all the way through and I don't, it doesn't require any more discussion. It's just a suggestion going forward.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That is a new term, so we will have a new definition for it and we'll look for ways to kind of explain that where the requirement appears so you don't have to, you know, refer to a definition somewhere, which may have been challenging. So appreciate that and thanks for coming.
So we need to do a public hearing, which will involve comments and then motions and amendments and so forth. I'd just say, is there any more questions we want to ask Jeff or David before we move on to that? Okay. Thanks for hanging in there with us, Jeff. We'll see how, how this goes with our motions and amendments. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on the topic of code implementation for housing affordability as part of the comp plan update. Does anyone have any public comments? Looks like Mr. Stickney is going to go first.
Cover a few things. Real good comments from everyone tonight. It's lots to talk about. You know, Paul Stickney, Sammamish. I will send to Jeff and David the information from the Department of Commerce on affordability that Redmond amassed. It was great. And one comment for Sayed Safavian, I know there was some issue over a couple of meetings during primary roads. I don't think that's arterials and classifications. That's what's in regards to the house, which way does the house face? So the way I have used that in real estate for years is if a house is on two roads, there's a frontage that is more important to that house than the other, and then that gets a side yard setback. So I don't think it's classification of traffic, it's orientation of a house. These are just a few odds and ends. And for consultants, I don't need a answer here, but I believe that the faith-based number of units per acre is higher than anything that's being contemplated in any of the overlays. I mean, the net yield on a lot going up to a six-story, but I don't know that for a fact. I was curious, what, what is that? Okay. In short order, I can get this close, but maybe not as complete as it could be. And if I think of something more, I'll send it in. But I believe there's a way to address the comments about affordability. And think of not just one Benjamin Franklin T-bar chart, but a couple. If existing lots are vacant in Sammamish and someone builds a house, there shouldn't be affordability on that. It's a pre-existing condition. If someone tears a house down on a one-for-one replacement, shouldn't be affordability on that. If someone chooses not to utilize missing middle on a lot that's large enough, shouldn't be affordability yet. It's part of the program and if they do missing middle in the future, they pay. On the other hand, I think a penalty is only if you lose money as opposed to less gain. I don't think that is being penalized. So if you do missing middle and it increases your net yield significantly as opposed to just selling the parcel as it is, that's totally fair game for a fair affordable housing fee. And I'm not sure there's any limit other than is there net gains in the future? If you assemble land with a neighbor and you have a net increase, to me, it comes down to something real simple. If you're adding value above what you currently have by more units, pay the affordability fee to the city. And if not, and it stays with, without subdivisions, don't charge for potential unrealized, charge for potential realized, when it is, whenever it is in the future. Have it be an ongoing system. So I agree with Arch that the upside is real. And I don't think from a statesman perspective that all the upside goes to the homeowner. They weren't expecting it two or three years ago. If they get 70, 80% of the upside, that's huge and the community gets a piece of it. But to penalize somebody for not utilizing missing middle, I don't agree. So to me, it's when it becomes realized. A couple of comments on what I turned in. Condominiums are, have, the law has altered and is very close to being doable in the near future compared to the past. That's why I sent, and I made a mistake today. I think in my type notes, I called it House Bill 5258. It is Senate Bill 5258, but the, but the sheet I turned in was right, so it saved the day. A couple of my comments that I turned in were, were covered. I'm not going to go over with them. And one of my comments I am going to go over, probably won't be popular, but from a statesman perspective, it needs to be brought up. And if you have rocks and tomatoes, you can toss them then, but not quite yet. Hardscape, Mark Baughman talked about, I got those questions answered on this, character I'd like to suggest that we have some upside for sizes of cottages when we want larger missing middle. If someone wants a million or a million-two house, that's bigger than a 1,200-foot cottage. I was just at an open house this last weekend and an agent who I know in Sammamish was saying that she had two women come in that each are splitting up with husbands and they want something in the 1, 2 to 1, 4 range and it's not here. So we can't just be focused on just smaller. And it's not just about workforce, it's about unplanned and planned changes for those of us that are here. And that's my main issue with housing imbalance across the board. So workforce is critical, but so is needs for all the folks here who just don't want as big a house, who have to have two households. They just have circumstances that, like I said in my first comment, it doesn't matter until it does. So we need to kind of contemplate all that. And housing affordability at 30% should cover all AM band, AMI bands, not stop at 120%. It should just be a note that it does apply to everyone. And in this document, it talks about meeting all economic needs. I'm still going to do a plug that the current comp plan isn't coming close for 10 years to meeting all economic needs at mostly stressing affordable housing only. We have a vast deficiency in the 500 to 1, 4 range. We should be beginning to address that and use that for some inclusionary too. So here comes my rock chuck comment. I think over half of our affordable housing deficiency is pre-existing condition that falls on current taxpayers, not on new development. Are we going to talk to our community about meeting affordable housing needs that have existed for 20 years for workforce that have been targeted, that have gone unmet? There we go.
Normally I'd say thanks, Paul, but I'm looking for my tomatoes.
Mary, do you have a comment?
Mary Victor, Sammamish, 24 years. I did send in a short little notes thing and I probably won't have time to go through that. I'm hoping that since this is a public hearing, some of that will be integrated into the matrices or comments or something. I only spent a couple hours today reading and I also read Paul Stickney's that he sent in that had yellow and then he had green boxes with questions, which I thought were really, really great questions. So I'm hoping that those will get put in and responded to because he wanted some things clarified. And he also does a tremendous amount of research. The other thing, I'll just speak to stormwater briefly. Whenever you're doing stormwater code, if you're going to 2,000 square feet, you are required to have a drainage review. So like if it's a single-family home. So where I live, a lot of people built a 1,998 or 999 square foot house to not have to do the drainage. I'm all for building more and for building middle housing and whatever units that we can do, but the stormwater code is going to come into play. So if you want to restrict houses to be smaller, you can't just say it, you just can't regulate it. You can do things like I believe a couple of meetings ago Jeff had done where they said if you want more units, they could make the footprint smaller, like it could only be a 6,000 square foot, so you had to do more units in it. And I think that those things need to get done. Just going to mention a couple of things here. I don't think we have anywhere in this city where we really allow or, or promote or incentivize mobile home use. Those are less expensive and since they don't charge you, since it's a temporary living, you don't have to pay the biggest taxes on it. We could also have manufactured or prefab homes that are done. Those are pretty nice these days. I've given you articles and things from NPR before on that. I think that's very important. I will remind you that in town center, they had sort of a bonus pool that you could buy into and it was like, hey, if you bought it, you could get one more unit, but you had to do 10% affordable housing. And I believe all those got bought up, so the builders must be willing to do 10% affordability. I think you want to stay away from this is where those people live or this is where those houses are built because you don't have diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And there are people that are workforce housing, like the firefighters, the teachers, and then there's essential workers that maybe bag your groceries. And then there's divorced people that like can't live in the same household anymore. You have a lot of things. I'm concerned about the affordability requirements. You guys talked about it a lot before and you've talked a lot about, lot today. And I think Jeff and David mentioned some things. I think instead of having you guys say what you want, I think if you guys had like a multiple choice of these things and then you could tally them or vote for them, I think that would be better because I think you're also uninformed a little bit. The kind of the, the mental think that I'm hearing is I have a lot, I want to build a big, single-family home for my family to live there and I don't want it to be more expensive because of other things. I think people need to say, we don't need to build such a big home. And if you build a big home, you already have the right to do an ADU or a duplex. So when you do a duplex, you split the cost of the land in half. So all of a sudden your cost is half. And then if you do an ADU-integrated and an ADU-detached plus a home, you're getting three on one lot. And the reason that you want to do that, even if it's just your family, is when you first move in, maybe you're a couple, you can't afford things, then you start having kids. Then you need the crier room, particularly if you work from home, because when the kid's really noisy, you can't do your Zoom calls and things. But if you have that ADU that's welded off, then you can have an office there. You also might need to have a nanny that lives with you so you can have a caregiver that would help. You might have somebody move from abroad who lives with you or a foreign exchange student. You might have somebody that you rent to because the mortgage that you have is too much and you need to have them help out. And then as you get older, you might need to have an accessible place that doesn't have the stairs that you can live in, or maybe that's a place a caregiver can live. So instead of always having these giant, single-family homes that are breaking the city and we're not getting enough funding from them, you need to have different ways that you think about it. So I'm just giving examples for just like a single lot that's buildable. But when you go to the builders and what they're doing, we can have other things and I think you need to go for it. Also, in the last meeting where we discussed the affordability requirements and even tonight, Director Pyle had said, if you don't start off with a plan, you can't add it later. And at the last meeting, I think Baugh, Ms. Baughman, the chair and other people said, hey, we do have to have something that we start with. And like Mr. Bresko said tonight, you can change it, but if you don't have it, then you're really stuck. So this is something where, yeah, it's a requirement, it's a homework, you got to turn in and put your name on and you'll be able to do it at a different level later, but it's a required homework, okay? So you, you're not going to, I would not advise that you go without it. And if we're having trouble deciding, I think the list of things Jeff Arango, that maybe Paul Stickney brought up and that Mr. Pyle brought- Paul Stickney brought up and that Mr. Pyle brought up, I think that those you can see as choices. You could say, we don't know which one, we don't know what we want, but here's our rank order, or at least here's the subset that we're most interested in or most popular. And then give the council 10 or 15 or 20 of them. But we can't go with, it's just going to make my house cost more. You can do smaller units. You can live in smaller places. You can have separate studios. You can have an office in the back. You can have multiple things, cottage homes and things like that. So I just wanted to go through that. Let's see if I have some more notes here. So I talked about manufactured housing and mobile housing. Those can be spread like Inglewood, which is a development that has really small lots. There's a bunch of mobile homes in there. You can't even really see where they are. I've also seen those in places in Kirkland and Redmond. When Director Pyle was talking about exemptions, I think just like the possibilities for the affordability, there should be the possible exemptions. The one I liked best was where the applicant demonstrates that the middle housing is not attainable on the property, you shouldn't be billed for it. And then you could also consider what Mr. Stickney said, where if you're not using it, you don't have to pay it, but at the point you use it, you pay it. I think as soon as you are building more, you're getting, if you owned land and all of a sudden you can do more with it, it has more value, you can build more things, and paying that fee helps make sure that you can either do it on your property, where you can have those affordable units, or you're paying a fee to somewhere that it gets done, whether it's in that area or in the city of Samamish or somewhere else. So I think those things are all really important. And then rather than try to go over the rest of my notes, you can do things. Like we did a development, a friend of mine in Montana, where there's 125 homes, and 13% of it are restricted-sized lots. They're scattered throughout. You can't tell where they are. And in 2008, when the market was really down, first-time homebuyers were getting about $8,000 to buy, and that's what let the development not be foreclosed upon. And you're going to see, depending on what happens with the new elections, you're going to see first-time homebuyers that are going to get help. So you can spread things. You can have them diverse. You can have multiple units. We need to look at those and be for them and try to get progress moving forward with the new development.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? Michael? Anybody online?
There's one hand raised online, Mr. James Eastman. I will promote you now.
I was going to say, should we take bets? It's James.
Yeah, you sure took bets there, Mark. Of course, it's me. James Eastman, Eastman, Samamish Parkway. Thanks for the work. Everyone's done on this. There was a while where we were doing a little bit of a lull, maybe a meeting a month, maybe two, real quick, short meetings, and then going into the summer and the fall, the amount of work is impressive. So thank you, everybody. Thanks, city staff. Hopefully wind down here shortly, towards the end of the year, and everyone go on an awesome vacation. Overall, really impressed with the code. Some things that I want to bring up as part of this public hearing, I know everyone has their own perspective they bring, and me, I apply it to what I've seen with my own property over the years. So maybe some things that I can say, might be able to maybe just shed a little light on some issues that, I don't know, maybe we've thought of or we haven't thought of. But here's how they apply to me. In Monday's city council meeting, there was a developer that got up there and just said, you know, one thing that developers can really use is flexibility. And this is an awesome, impressive code. But when you try to wrap your head around it, it's very prescriptive. You have alleyways, you have front streets, side streets, different rules for this, different rules for that. I don't really know how that's all going to play out, or how that'll be applied, or if there's flexibility on that. I can't really comment on that part of the code, but I can comment on if there's any opportunities for the city to offer flexibility. It would greatly benefit the predictability that a developer has in committing to a certain product line. With the FARs, I've already mentioned, I think they're not quite high enough. But I know why they're in place. They're in place for bulk and scale. So if there's some flexibility, the city could offer there. And achieving bulk and scale without maybe upping the FAR, I think that could be done by going below ground. That doesn't affect bulk and scale. Maybe a daylight basement, daylight parking areas with alleyway behind back, maybe it's down the backside of a hill, and there's parking, comes in from there. Maybe we exempt that if it's below the front of the house, or below the original street grade, or whatever it is, something that promotes bulk and scale and also allows the developer to get value out of their land. So I think there's hopefully some more things that maybe we can look at as this develops further, or maybe even after we implement it, evaluate whether or not developers are choosing the ADU route or the middle housing overlay route. And then another thing that's kind of really late in the game, I don't expect you guys to handle, but this townhome information is somewhat fascinating to me. I wish it had came up earlier, because really, if that's as profitable as we say it is, that's where we should be trying to encourage that sort of housing and partner with developers and get these housing fees for affordable housing because the profits are there. And in regards to my property, you know, I would like to do a neighborhood center on my property, but at a point in time, I had, you know, a lot of density and not a lot of place to put it. So I considered, you know, putting a bunch of townhomes on my property. And, you know, the old code, you could actually put up to eight townhomes in a row in R4. This new code, you can only put four units in a row. So we've taken it down. So in that aspect, in building townhomes, one of the most profitable middle housing units, this new code, actually, you have to split them up. And I think you have to, would only be allowed three townhomes unless a fourth is affordable. So if you were comparing this code to the old code, the old code, if you have a lot of density in certain situations with a lot, actually worked better for townhomes as far as the return on investment. I'm sure in most scenarios, they're not that way. But I guess what I'm getting at is, would it hurt to keep that at eight? Like, I think the reason we've taken townhomes down to allowing eight townhomes in a row to three or four in a row is because of bulk and scale, which is understandable. But we just took away the one thing that we know developers are going to put in, that's middle housing. And they're not, they're not just going to say, oh, can't do that anymore now, and go to single-family housing. So I guess what I'm trying to say is maybe we should key in on these townhomes now that we know that information and see if we can create some win-wins with developers for this affordable housing bond that we're trying to build. Other than that, yeah, just the more flexibility that we could put in this code, the better. Thanks so much for all you do.
Thanks, James. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Want to close the public hearing?
Would anybody be so inclined to make a motion?
And I don't think there's one in here, but it's actually pretty close in the packet under, needed from the council with a couple of added words, you'd have a motion. And if not, I will do it.
I move that the planning commission recommended the city council the proposed development regulations that will be implemented in the 2024, implement for the 2024 comprehensive plan as presented in the packet that we've been reviewing this evening.
Second.
No, I'm going to say it again. No, I'm not. It's moving to second that we recommend the regulations as presented in the packet. Any discussion? And let me say, I have a couple of amendments that I'm going to propose. So let me just preview that. And if you want to do it, you're welcome to, but I have a couple of them, so don't be shocked. Okay. So let me take a shot at this First Amendment. And because it's late, I'm trying to accomplish a lot with a little bit of time and a few words. Okay. This First Amendment is to add two exemptions under 2110. The first one being add 2110-0704F. So this will be an exemption. A single-family home built for the existing property owner to own and occupy up to 3,000 square feet, and the exemption will remain in place until the time of first market sale. Second exemption would be 2110-070 dot four dot G. This one would be, what did we say the other one was going to be? Oh, if the applicant can demonstrate that affordability cannot be achieved. Yes. I didn't actually write it down. I was trying to do that as we were going through the meeting. Yes. If the applicant can demonstrate that the overlay cannot be achieved. Now, if there's better words for this, I recommend others weigh in on that. But I was trying to get at what we were talking about, which was, you know, building the house for yourself and living in it up to a reasonable size, not a 9,000-square-foot house, but a reasonable size for most people. And if they want to go over that, then there probably needs to be some discussion about that. And then also, in those instances where somebody is in, under a covenant or in a homeowners' association, so they can't really accomplish anything, they get no value out of the revisions anyway. So those are the two amendments, or the two modifications in one amendment that I was intending to make under the exemptions.
I thought that you said three amendments.
That was, that was one amendment for two additional exemptions in 2110-070 dot four. So let's see. That was, I moved an amendment. Does anyone want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So is there discussion? Does anybody want to change anything about those two amendments?
I disagree with paying a penalty.
Could you turn on your mic?
I disagree with the first one about paying a penalty if someone is building a house for themselves, not even when they sell it. They're not building it for profit. They're building it for themselves. They're just like anyone else. When the time comes for them to sell it, they benefit. I'm not penalizing them for that. If a developer is building a subdivision, yes, I would require the 10%. I would agree on the 10%, even though I do not believe that it will provide affordability. It will just increase the prices of homes. Developers will spread that cost, and what will end up, firefighters and nurses will not be able to buy them. All the high-tech will be the only ones who can buy them, the highly-paid, fortunate people. And we are not solving the problem. That's, that's where I am.
And I, I agree that if we could, if I could figure out a way to say it so that, you know, if you lived there for some number of years, 10 years or something, the reason I put that in there is to try to, for the discussion we had, is to try to avoid the shenanigans where somebody puts their cousin's name on there and then sells it six weeks later.
Can I say that there will never be such a person? There will be people like this, but we cannot put the rule for the less than 1% that will take advantage of the rule. We are penalizing the majority of the Samamish citizens because there are the very few who will take advantage of the, of this. It will make the people who will move to Samamish not welcomed. And we are trying to make it a welcoming city, an affordable city. And I truly want to make it affordable. And I just do not believe that penalizing people will make it affordable. And no one can show me that other cities benefited from this. Show me whose numbers. I will sign off now.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I'll jump in here. I like the way Paul Stickney wrote it in terms of the realization of the added value for when you can get additional units from the property. And so, Mark, what you had, just one of the 3,000 feet, and then the first sale, doesn't necessarily take that into account. So if we could come up with some wording that would talk about, you know, when you're now putting in the ADU or other ways that you have added value to the property, then I think it would be commensurate with some of the, or address some of the concerns that you have.
Yeah, I was thinking about this. Originally, I had some ADU stuff in there, but I was thinking ADUs were exempt from this anyway, so the ADU part of it is kind of not relevant because it's exempt anyway.
From the, yes, although I was talking about the...
If you build non-ADU units as part of the overlay, then you realize...
For sure, yeah. So that's why, maybe that was a bad example. But if you're able to realize the additional, if you're able to, actually, I think Paul said it, with realizing that benefit of being able to add additional units onto the property, you know, through middle housing overlays, for example. So that may be a better way, because then there is an increase in value for the property that the owner gets, and to essentially share some of that value with the city for the purpose of creating the fund for, adding to the Fund for Affordability would be a good thing. So how to word that, I'm not quite so sure.
So my thought is agreement with the amendment. And my thinking is, particularly when you added the total square footage limitation, once you go over 3,000 square feet, and we can have a food fight over what number that should be, you're building a pretty big house. That means that you've got some resource, and adding the 10% probably isn't going to have any effect on whether or not you build that house. You want to be here. You have the property. And then for those that are less than 3,000 square feet, that you pay as you go out, your real estate has probably appreciated significantly, and you're still contributing to our community. I think that's part of the thing that's getting lost in this whole message or discussion is, how do we, we're not trying to make things equal, but we are trying to make it more equitable in terms of the ability for people to live here, which means you and I have been here for a while. We might have to give up a little bit of something so someone else can live here. I don't know what that is, but I think your amendment takes a step in that right direction. So I support the amendment, or both provisions of the amendment.
People should have the right to build the home they want for themselves and get treated equally like everyone else. For someone, he was fortunate, she was fortunate, they inherited the money, they made the money. It's money they earned through legal ways. They want to build a 9,000-square-foot home, it's their right. They should be able to build a 9,000-square-foot home. I personally cannot do it. I cannot afford it. But I won't prevent someone from doing it. They earned it. They deserve it. We cannot penalize them.
I don't see this as a penalty as much as a contribution to our community.
It's an additional tax that's not being applied to everyone else. They are paying their fair tax just like everyone else. We cannot, why tax them extra? Because they worked smarter than myself? No. I disagree with taxing them extra.
One comment I will make is that I think we should be cautious about sort of the... sort of the, the discussion about, you know, it's no big deal, all right? If you're building, if you have the money to build a big house, it's no big deal. If it's, if it's, we don't really know for sure. I got the impression from this discussion, it could be $80,000. $80,000 is a big deal. I don't care who you are and what you're doing. If that's the right number, not if you told me it's 5,000? I mean, I think that's the, that's the danger here is that if we don't really know what we're talking about in terms of the values that we're batting around, that 80,000 turns into 120,000, is that a big deal on a $1.5 million house you're building for yourself? I don't know. I'm not sure. I just want to be a little careful to just say, oh, well, you know, it's not a big deal because to somebody, it might be, right? I mean, I have a friend, and this is not asking for a friend situation. This is actually somebody I know. It's a family. They own a lot. It's hard to build on lots, so it's expensive for them to build. They rent right now because they're saving their pennies to try to build a house. And if I go and tell them that they got to pay another $80,000 to build their house, they're not going to ever build a house in Samamish. So there are real people out there in real situations where these dollars make a difference. So we should just be a little careful about, you know, sometimes real money is real money.
So what would happen if you reduce the threshold from 3,000 to 2,000?
I will say, I think I, I picked 3,000 because there's quite a few three and four-bedroom homes from the, let's call it 70s to 90s range that fit pretty well in that. And if you bumped over it because you built a, a mother-in-law, you know, room on the side of it, why, maybe there'd be a minor penalty that goes with that, but it'd be pretty small. Once you start to get up into building really large homes, then that might be a different situation. But I just was trying to pick something that would fit the average family, nuclear family, the old term, building a house on a lot. Not anything more magical than that. So I would actually like to, I, I kind of agree with, with Hisham's comments about selling it. So I've been sitting here trying to figure out how to change the wording, as you suggested, Mike. So I'm wondering if I could change it to say, as an exemption, a single-family home built for an existing property owner to own and occupy up to 3,000 square feet and until the property owner takes advan, takes advantage of the overlay. I'm trying to think of some words there that are, you know, when they build something that the overlay would allow them to build, that they take advantage of the value, that kind of gets at the real, realization of the value. But I'm not sure if that's the best way to say it.
How about the owner should change?
I kind of agree with Hisham that, you know, if all they do is build it and then sell it, they're not, they're not realizing any real value from the overlay, from the upzone, if that's what we're calling it. It's when they realize value from the upzone, and I want to say it in a way that demonstrates that.
Well, I, I think that's clear enough to take to council. And, and with maybe some fine tuning from, you know, Jeff and, and the team in development. But it gets, it gets the point across that I think, or at least that I feel comfortable with, that there, when there is value realized, and I go back to what Paul said,
Yeah.
that, that really struck me, that there's a point when you can define that. And, and so it's very clear, and there's additional wealth that goes to the owner and to tax or whatever you want to call, have a fee and lieu collected at that point in time, it's pretty clear.
Yep.
So, and I think the way you stated that is sufficient for being able to move to, to council. And I also agree with the, the middle housing overlay cannot be achieved. So that's another good control.
Yeah.
So with those changes, I would be really supportive.
And council, they have an attorney. He can write it in a better way that avoids the city in getting into legal issues.
I hope so.
Because I, I bet they will get into legal issues.
So, and I, I mentioned this earlier, and David replied, that if you're building on the base zoning, R1, R4, that's essentially what we're saying. And then if nothing, no, there's no housing amount. But then if you apply the overlay, so the question is, how far do you go in the zoning? So if you're getting up into what would be considered multi-residential, multifamily, are, are we sticking to single-family detached base zoning?
That was my intent.
Okay.
Yes. One family, one house.
One house. No townhouses?
Nope.
Yeah, okay.
That was my intent, whether it's right or not, that was, yeah.
The overlay benefit, David used an example earlier about today I built a house. In a couple of years, my, or maybe it was, I'm not sure who, who's used the example. I don't want to put words on David's mouth. Maybe it was Paul or someone else. That maybe today I build it and then I build another ADU for my babysitter. And then I build another one for my parents. And I'm now taking advantage of the middle housing. I'm adding this. I also don't believe that that individual should be taxed. In, in my mind, if you are doing it for commercial, commercial versus personal use is different. Personal use, it should not be taxed. Commercial, I disagree with taxing it because I don't believe that it will make houses affordable, yet I, I will sign off, but I, I disagree that it's going to make houses affordable.
And remember, the ADUs are exempt from all this anyway, so it's only when you build a house that's bigger than an, or beyond an ADU. Okay. To avoid being here all night, I'm going to call the question on this one. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye.
Amendment as amended, or as modified with the overlay, right?
Yes, the amendment as modified. Hopefully, you guys can look at the recording at 1.2 times speed and get that. The amendment as modified, say aye. Aye. Oppose, oppose no?
Abstain.
I say no. You, you are majority. You don't need-
Three. Yeah, okay. So that passes. Just wanted to make sure, since we're supposed to be seven. Okay. My next amendment. And modify 2110-060 dot two dot B. After the words affordable housing units add within the city of Samamish. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, so my objective here was, just as we discussed, is to try to put some brackets around keeping the dollars that are generated within the city so they can't be used to build something in, I don't know, Woodinville. That was very simple, right? Just, just doing that. Any comments on that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no? Thanks. I think that's all, all the amendments I really had planned. Anybody else? Comments you want to see forwarded to the council? I mean, I think that we've covered a lot of it, that they're going to, if they watch this meeting, they'll hear a lot of the comments, so.
And again, thanks to staff and the consultant. They work really hard, put it all these together. Thank you, David. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, I, I, I agree with Sid. Thank, thank you so much, David and Jeff. Appreciate your patience with me. I, I truly appreciate it.
And to be, to be sure, this is not the last time we're going to be talking about this topic.
So, you know, this is-
Makes us feel better?
Well, I, I think, you know, as we learn more about it and as we continue to refine it, I think it's, it's going to be a really helpful, this is a helpful starting point for us. And we envision that we're going to be definitely bringing this back, although, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll have some examples of how, how it has been applied. And then you can learn from those examples and we can adjust accordingly.
Yeah, I think just to echo, you know, and reinforce about all the hard work. I had a sense that dealing with the affordability challenge in this region was really difficult. It's even more difficult than I thought. I mean, you know, you think about all these various trade-offs and how we're, we're hoping there'll be results and it's just like, we're hoping, you know, there's, it's, it's still like pretty fuzzy out there how this is all going to work out with a lot of work and, you know, recognizing the analysis, you know, Jeff and you and your team have done and all that. So affordability is super difficult, and especially when you take a look at what the prices are in Samamish and you try to get anything close to what some reasonable income-level person could afford, gosh. So hopefully, we've made some strides towards that and we're going to, I'm sure, come back and tweak it and try to make it better, so.
Is there a way we can have another meeting with Arch? I know we went previously and we talked to them. I, I truly believe there are ways to, to build affordable houses in Samamish. But, but we, we need to think differently.
So one of the things we could do is we could schedule a planning commission meeting sometime in the first quarter of '25 that would be, you know, probably end of January, early February.
Workshop?
A workshop, yeah. And we will talk about both the town center affordability, because that's a big part of town center. But we could also talk about and debrief from this conversation with Arch and ask questions and take that opportunity to learn from them. And, and really then continue to work on this topic because I think they have a depth of knowledge that, you know, and I, I really understand what, what I'm hearing here is that, you know, it's not just about making, you know, creating a revenue source to make to, to then partner and build affordable housing. It's also about naturally creating affordable housing. That, that, that is, you know, that doesn't necessitate a, a program that you have to administer to then, you know, bring the costs down. It's, so I, I, I definitely fully understand what you're saying and hear what you're saying. And I'm just, I've been scratching my head here trying to think about, you know, how would you do that? So I really want to ask Arch that also.
You know, one thing that always puzzles me, if you look at a couple of eastside cities, Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, us, of course, and possibly Issaquah, the land values doesn't really change that much. Average home prices that I see, there are not that much difference. But why we struggling with affordable housing? What's the reason?
Well, you want the fill, I, I, I can't answer that. I mean, I don't know why we're, we, as a region are struggling with it. I mean, I, I would say there's income issues, income inequalities, there's, there's some that can pay, some that can't. And those that can't get driven further and further away, you know, yet they're also working service jobs. If you look at regional planning efforts, you go to, to Pegeestown Regional Council's Vision 2050, one of the biggest things in there is, is really making sure that the jobs housing balance is right, making sure that people can, can live near where they work for the purpose of life equity, right? I mean, the simple fact that Evan and I are going to have to leave here and drive each one of us for an hour and 20 minutes during traffic, I guess, maybe, maybe it's a little less in the evening, to, to get home is, is really speaks to that issue, you know, and so it's, it's, that's part of it is people in the region don't want to spend their lives commuting to jobs only to then go home and go back to sleep and then come back again. I mean, I, I practically could live in the parking lot here sometimes.
But, but the land value keeps going up and construction materials cost keeps going up.
I realize, but why we having this problem and the other cities they don't, when the land values are almost the same?
I bet they do. This cannot be isolated to Samamish.
I think, I think when you see organizations like the Boeing Machinist Union strike, there's a whole lot of issues there. But part of that is when, when cities like Everett and Linwood, that, that really is where a majority of, of those, those individuals live, they can't even afford to live there anymore. So, so they're, what they're saying is, hey, you know, we're, there's a bit of a problem here when our pay won't allow us to live in our own communities that are around where our employer is.
That's all fascinating and we're not going to solve it this evening. So I'm going to call the question. I think we did not vote on the original motion. So we still need to vote on the original motion as amended. So any further discussion or can we go ahead and vote on recommending this to the city council as amended?
I have a question. So since I voted abstain, do I have to keep my position abstain or, or how does it work?
All you did is abstain to voting on an amendment. So that's all in the past. So now you can do whatever you want.
Okay, go ahead.
All those in favor of recommending this to the city council as amended, say aye. Aye. Oppose no? Thank you. And I would say, I also appreciate the work and I have been involved in this for a number of years and it feels like sometimes you're hitting your head against the wall. So thanks for staying positive and continuing to try because it's a, it's a frustrating topic for the city of Samamish. So, thank you. All right. Before we leave this evening, is there anything else from Evan or David? I will say on the calendar, our next meeting is October 17th. Anything else we need to cover?
And that, that meeting will be where we cover town center and the docket. So October 17th is where we bring back our update to the town center that was delivered to the council earlier this week on the first. And that's where we'll talk about some of the results from the economic modeling of different housing types in the town center.
Great.
I will be out of town that day. I will do my best to call it.
Or watch the video like two times.
All right. Looking forward to it. Would someone move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Let's move to second and we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. See you on October 17th.